Good evening, everyone, and welcome. We will call this meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada in the name of our Constitution, our liberty, and justice for all.
Well, thank you to those of you in the audience for joining us, and thank you to everyone watching us on YouTube for tuning in. Al, could you start us off with roll call, please?
And this is roll call for the Special City Commission Meeting of Wednesday, December 2nd. Benson.
Benson here.
Benson is present. Brunick.
Brunick here.
Brunick is present. Sarda.
Sarda here.
Sarda's present. Mybaum.
Mybaum is present.
Mybaum is present. Minor.
Minor is present.
Minor is present. Moser.
Moser here.
Moser's present. Strom.
Strom here.
Strom is present. Weber.
Weber is present.
Weber's present. Mayor Johnson.
Johnson here.
Mayor Johnson is present. City Manager Leon.
Leon's here.
City Manager Leon is present. City Attorney Denherter.
Denherter is here.
City Attorney Denherter is present.
All right. First, we will have public appearances, and this is a time for members of the audience to address the Commission about items not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone present tonight that would like to address the Commission? Seeing no movements, I will go to -- Dave, are you on YouTube?
I am.
Are there any public appearances on YouTube?
There are no comments for items not on tonight's agenda.
Okay. Thank you. With that, we have no old business, which means we will go to new business. And the purpose of tonight's meeting is to introduce and discuss ordinance number 1044, which is a temporary mask ordinance. There will be no public input tonight. That will be during our second reading and public hearing, which will be set for December 9th. City Manager Leon, can you talk to the public or explain to the public how they can provide us with input on this ordinance during the next week?
Sure. So, the City Commission, as Mayor Johnson said, does not vote on the ordinance tonight. This is a first reading. So, what they do is they introduce the language, and it's in a draft form. So, with guidance from City Attorney Ross Denherter, he has indicated that this evening the Commission can make some changes to the language if they'd like. They can make some tweaks, et cetera. But the language is introduced if a Commissioner during the action item introduces the language. At that point, we will begin collecting people's comments. So, there won't be public comment taken this evening. However, if you want to comment on YouTube, or over email, or on our Facebook, or any of those other mediums, we will collect those. Those will be made part of the public record and public packet that the Commission will see and will obtain prior to the subsequent special meeting, which will be December 9th, so a week from tonight, at 5:30 at the Yankton High School Theater. So, we will also publish notice of that meeting coming up. So, folks can have as much time as they need until 3 o'clock on Tuesday, the 8th, to submit comments. So, now I want to talk to you about some of the ways you can submit them to the City. So, number one is you can email those comments to us at commission@cityofyankton.org. That's commission@cityofyankton.org. Folks that want to actually write a letter can do so. That's an option as well. That can be sent to the Yankton City Commission, Yankton City Hall, PO Box 176, Yankton, South Dakota, 57078. You can comment on Facebook, make comments on Facebook. We'll compile all those comments that we get throughout the week, and we'll share those as well. Folks can also attend the meeting at the Yankton High School Theater next week. If they would prefer to give their public comment, add a microphone, and have it videotaped as part of your meeting, they can come and do that as well. We will require, again, masking for that meeting and social distancing, and we'll have some of our folks from the Yankton Police Department helping people out with that. We've done this for a couple reasons, this alternative way of submitting comments. Although, people can always submit comments that way to us, and we get them to the Commissioners when we receive them. We're kind of advertising this, I guess, as a way to provide comment, so we can get as much input as possible, number one, but also so we avoid a large gathering. It is a public meeting. Anybody can come. We'll never discourage anyone from coming to. We believe we have a method where people can attend safely. However, you know, our staff and our Commissioners are important, and we want to keep everyone as healthy as possible, and we're being encouraged not to get together in groups, right? So, we also want to not be counterintuitive to the work the Commission is doing, and we want to make sure that we're trying to avoid crowds. So, that's the reason for that. So, I want to make sure that's clear. Now, people have been talking about masks and COVID-19 for a long time, but that discussion has really gotten involved in our community in the last 30 days. So, if you are an organization or an individual citizen who has sent an email to me or to the City Commission, or you've written a letter, or your organization has supplied a letter in the last 30 days, so anytime from November 8th of this year to December 8th at 3 o'clock this year, we'll include that as part of the public record, and we will let folks, you know, the Commissioners see that. That will also be posted to the public packet, so everyone can read those comments. If there's something inappropriate written, we will, you know, make sure we take care of that with a little black marker, but we will make sure that we include all those things. So, no need to resubmit if you've already sent a letter. We know how you feel, unless, of course, you've changed your mind and you want to tell us something else. But you don't need to resubmit that. We have all those things, and we will get them all to the Commission again, and they'll be part of the public record at that meeting on December 9th. So, for you Commissioners, we are guests at the school in our joint facility. They're letting us use a room we typically don't use. We are still working out the technology logistics. Dwayne has taken on more than he thought he was going to this year, and he'll put something else on his plate, but he's working out the technology and how we can interact. So, I'm going to have to get back to you Commissioners on if we have a limited number who can attend, or if we have a limited number who can attend virtually, or how that's all going to work, but we will get that sorted out, and it will be on YouTube, et cetera. So, tonight, if you're commenting on YouTube, we'll capture those. That'll be part of that record as well. We won't read them, but you can, you know, certainly make your comments. So, again, one more time, commission@cityofyankton.org is the email address, and this is all on the agenda, tonight's agenda, so you can take a look at that and see that and read through it if I've skipped over something or didn't say something clearly. So, I just want to make that really clear for everybody, so that we can get everybody's information and also be good stewards of time and good stewards of the decision-making that's going to take place. So, is there anything else, Mr. Mayor, that you'd like me to reiterate for the public or the Commission's benefit?
Nope. I think you've done a very thorough job. Thank you, Amy. I appreciate that. So, with that, again, our old business is a memorandum supporting -- excuse me, a memorandum for the first reading of ordinance number 1044, which is a temporary mask ordinance, and we are setting December 9th, 2020, as the second reading and public hearing of this ordinance. Is there a Commissioner that would like to introduce this ordinance?
This is Commissioner Weber, and I'll introduce it.
Thank you, Commissioner Weber. Now, I would ask our City Attorney Ross Denherter to walk us through this proposed ordinance and explain the thought process behind it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, the ordinance that you've been provided here is an effort to create a mask mandate for the City of Yankton in a manner that empowers the public to do what's right, but similar to the approach taken by the City of Sioux Falls, there is not a penalty or a fine or jail time or anything of that nature for those who don't violate. Rather, what we do is we are encouraging property owners, business owners, to exercise their right to refuse service to patrons for any reason or no reason at all, as long as it's not discriminatory in nature. So, in this case, it's refusing service to those who refuse to wear a mask in accordance with the ordinance. And our law enforcement would enforce that right as essentially a trespass, taking advantage of trespass law, and it empowers our business owners then to enforce this within their own facilities. The ordinance, as it reads at this point, is an individual mandate to wear masks in places that are deemed open to the public. A facility is open to the public in a way that's broadly defined. If it is a place that employs employees where the public can enter, whether it's for-profit, nonprofit, any sort of place where people gather, you should wear a mask. And businesses are directed to require their employees and patrons to wear a mask also. We did prepare a fairly extensive list of exceptions, which makes sense where it's not practical to wear a mask, and I'll briefly go through those for the sake of the listening public and for the Commission. You are not required to wear a mask if you are an individual that is under the age of five, if you are seated at a public place to eat or drink, or if you're immediately consuming food or beverages, if you are receiving dental or medical care that prevents you from wearing a mask while you are receiving that service, also if you are receiving a service of any sort, for instance, a salon-type service that reasonably requires a temporary removal of a face covering. You don't have to wear a mask if you have a medical condition, mental health condition or a disability that makes it unreasonable for you to wear a mask. You don't have to wear a mask if you are engaged in swimming, showering, exercising, or a team sports activity where the nature of the activity or level of exertion makes it reasonably impractical to wear a mask, provided that a minimum social distancing of six feet or more is maintained to the extent possible, and further provided that spectators, coaches, and nonparticipants are wearing a face covering. Masks are not required for those who are public safety workers actively engaged in a public safety role, including law enforcement, firefighters, emergency medical personnel, in situations where wearing a face covering would seriously interfere with the performance of their public safety responsibilities. A mask is not required for those who are engaged in an occupation reasonably preventing the wearing of a face covering. It's not required for those who are asked to temporarily remove a face covering to verify his or her identity for lawful purposes. That would be, for instance, if you are pulled over for a lawful reason and an officer needs to confirm that you are the person who appears on the driver's license, for instance. A mask isn't required for those providing a speech, lecture, sermon, or broadcast to an audience, or officiating a ceremony or religious service, so long as six feet of distancing from other individuals is maintained. No mask is required for those seated at a desk or standing at a stationary workstation, provided that the desk or workstation is shielded from the public or other employees by a solid wall or protective glass, plexiglass, or plastic barrier or partition. A mask is not required if you are alone in an office, room, vehicle, the cab of equipment or machinery, or an enclosed work area. However, in such situations, you should carry a face covering to be used when you are no longer alone. A mask is not required for someone who is communicating with an individual who is deaf or hard of hearing, or who has a disability, medical condition, or mental health condition that makes communication with that individual impractical while wearing a face covering, provided that a minimum social distancing of six feet or more is maintained to the extent possible. And no mask is required if you are playing a musical instrument that cannot be played while wearing a face mask, provided that a minimum social distancing of six feet or more is maintained at all times. As I indicated, there is no penalty, but there is the encouragement and direction for property owners to enforce with the assistance of the Police Department through the laws of trespassing. And this ordinance does sunset. What that means is it terminates of its own accord at 12:01 a.m. on March 1 of this next year, unless this ordinance is extended by a further ordinance of this Commission. Now, having said that, we have also provided the opportunity for the Commission to simply suspend this ordinance by simple resolution. For instance, if a vaccine becomes widely available before the sunset date. So, this Commission could simply stop its enforcement or stop its effectiveness in the community just by simple vote of the Commission at a regular meeting when it's placed on the agenda, not having to go through two separate readings and a publication. It would become effective following the second reading and publication. If we timed this right with the press in Dakotin, in theory, we don't make major changes at the public hearing next Wednesday, and this Commission passes it, we could publish it next Thursday, and it would be effective next week Friday morning. If any significant changes are made to this ordinance next week, Wednesday, however, the soonest we could pass it into law would be at the regular Commission meeting on Monday, the 14th, and so it would be effective following publication that Wednesday. Does that make sense? So, that would be Wednesday, the 16th, if any changes are made next week, Wednesday. Does anyone have any questions? Commissioners? Now, I would invite all of you to debate the language, because now would be the time. I would really like your input as to changes you would like to be made, so that I can make them now, and what you see next Wednesday will, in fact, be something closer to a finished product, so that we could potentially avoid a second reading. It's not an error the way I say that. It's just a strange way the law is phrased. We would have to have an additional second reading.
Commissioners, any questions for the City Attorney or further discussion around the ordinance in general?
This is Commissioner Moser. I wonder, first of all, because I've been asked this question a million times. Okay, I might be exaggerating. Please explain to us and the listening audience how this differs from the resolution we have in place, because we brought it up at the work session. I'm sure many remember. We have a resolution in place, which, to me, provides very strong language. I mean, we talk about in Section 1, stay at home, you know, safe practices, which isn't just a mask. It's social distancing. It's washing your hands. It's doing all of those things. Section 4 talks about mental and emotional health and what to do there. So, it's lengthier than this one, and I think provides that more guidance. So, I don't know if it's Ross. If it's you, we have a resolution in place. We are now voting on an ordinance without a penalty. What's the difference?
Stated simply, an ordinance is law. A resolution is a recommendation to the public. In a context where you pass an ordinance that expressly by its own terms has no enforcement penalty associated with it, there's an argument to be made that, okay, it's the law, but isn't it still just a recommendation since there's no enforcement mechanism? I can't tell you philosophically whether that's true or right or wrong, or good or bad or otherwise. An ordinance is law, so you are with a straight face saying, it is law in Yankton that you must wear a mask. If you take away the right to issue a citation for it, it's subject to the criticism that you've kind of watered it down. It doesn't mean as much. But I would like to point out that the law of trespass is very much law, and it is very much enforceable. If a business owner refuses service to someone who refuses to wear a mask, and that individual refuses to leave, the police are willing to toss that individual into the back of a squad car. That's the law right now, and it will feel very much to those individuals who are not following the ordinance like this ordinance has teeth at that point in time. But it would be on the business owners to enforce it, and it's not the individual themselves who's being penalized for not wearing a mask. It's they're being penalized for failing to adhere to the instructions of the owner of that facility.
Just a reminder here. Can I just talk through the way I -- okay, so, I'm a business owner. I have this ordinance, and a person walks into my store, and they don't have a mask on. The first thing I would like to see for enforcement is for that business owner to be able to offer a mask to the person in case they don't have one. I think that's one of the built-ins that the Yankton School District has done with our mask mandate. We have masks if kids don't have them. So, I'll come back to that in a second. So, I ask -- sorry, Cat. I ask a person to put on a mask, and then they put on a mask, and we're good. Okay? Second thing is I ask a person to put on a mask, and then they don't, then I would ask a person to leave the premises. Right? And they do, then they do. We would not be to the enforcement, the trespassing, until we get very deep into the situation. Is that correct?
Yeah. The police can only enforce trespassing if you've asked them to leave and they refuse.
Okay. So, then my question then becomes, if we want to work with business owners, which we obviously want to do, is there a way -- I know we have this CARES Act money. Sorry.
I think you're muted, Commissioner Minor.
Your cat muted the mic.
She's so helpful. Is there a way to use CARES Act money to help supply masks to businesses that would like to have a mask available to offer to a customer that might not have one?
I don't know the answer to that. We'd have to look into that. Perhaps it's something we could do. There would be two sort of things to consider there. Number one, can we buy PPE, the protective equipment for, you know, non-public facilities? So, we know we can buy them for things like, you know, our public buildings and public facilities, and be reimbursed through CARES Act. I don't know the answer to that. Maybe. But then, two, can we find them, and can we find them at enough time? So, our last day to, you know, we have to spend that, get those invoices in, and get that money spent by the end of this month. That doesn't seem like a challenge, but it could be if there's a supply situation. So, if that's something that we, the Commission, would like us to do, I would need more time than I'd need a while to sort that out and then get some clarification on how many masks we're providing to every business, or to all, you know, people that are on our utilities, or how you'd like to do that. And then reimbursement would be, we'd have to submit it and probably see.
I simply ask because I think if we're going to be asking businesses to step up and ask customers to do this, I would like to see the City step up and help provide some of those resources.
There is some language in the CARES Act funding about not being able to benefit a third party. We'd have to take a look at that language. But, I mean, the City could spend their general fund money or some other money in its budget to do that. I don't want to make any promises, or I don't have suggestions tonight for that, but I can, if that's a desire of the Commission, happy to look at that and come up with a proposal. Supply may be an issue as well, just so everyone would be aware.
Absolutely understood. Thank you.
Can I chime in on that, Minor? So, there's one establishment in town that is requiring masks, right? And when a patron comes in there, they have to have one on, and I believe they can purchase it at that door, at the door. Obviously, the business wants them to come in. So, I would rather leave it up to the business to be ready. I know it might be short-term, but they have, most of them probably provide it for their employees. So, I would assume that they have quite a few of them, but the one business in town, they're ready, set up, and they have been for quite a while. So, I would rather leave it up to the business myself.
This is Commissioner Brunick. How about the Together We Can funds, the education funds? Is it possible to get masks through that?
My understanding, those funds are from both the private sector, some private donations and private individuals donating to that fund or that initiative, awareness campaign, and also that we will be spending some CARES Act funds, and we will be submitting to CARES Act for reimbursement. And, you know, as I mentioned last week, I'm not 100% sure, but I feel pretty confident that we would be able to have. So, if that, we could ask, approach that group and ask them if they'd like to redirect some funds to purchase PPE, if the Commission would like.
Yeah, I understand that we can't necessarily from the CARES Act, but private funding, I would think that we could certainly do that if they were willing to put money towards
I should say, sorry, just to follow up on my point. I don't think the City necessarily needs to supply masks for the duration all the way through March, but I think we may -- it's not easy necessarily to get PPE, so if we could have some PPE available, so that if this ordinance were to go into effect a week from tomorrow, I think it would be an act of good faith on the City's part to try to help businesses be able to follow the ordinance.
I'm not in on the supply chain, or other than to discuss with Public Safety what we need to order, but I wouldn't be able to get a mask but I wouldn't be able to get a mask amount probably to businesses by, you know, the effectiveness of this resolution. But I would just need a little time to figure out what we could do and then need some direction and how much you'd want us to spend and all those things.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Strom and I think Ross, this would be a question for you. The words encouraged and directed to refuse service under the no penalty section. So I went to establish, Vermillion has a similar, or has an ordinance placed where businesses are, it's actually a resolution in place where businesses are... It says that you're expected to wear a mask. I walked into it, two weeks ago I walked into an establishment there and they said, oh, you can take your mask off, it's fine. So I guess play the scenario out for me. I walk into an establishment in Yankton. They're not, the business owner is not following the directive by the ordinance to wear masks inside. Somebody else comes in who is wearing a mask and complains to the business owner that the other patrons are not wearing masks. What happens?
Nothing. This is an on your honor as a business owner to enforce this.
Because I mean, I can foresee that being an issue in some places that, you know, they are going to not follow directive by word for word and other patrons would like that and there could be some confrontation. So I just, I don't, yeah, anyway.
That's the, that's the weak aspect of an ordinance without a fine. There's no way to force it to an issue. My hope is if the commission passes this, of course, that property owners feel empowered to do the right thing to slow the spread of COVID-19 by requiring their patrons and employees to follow this. There's, they have the power. Whether they use it properly or not is on their honor.
And so the word directed inside this ordinance is not... You know, when I read directed, it sounds like you are ordered to do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's what it sounds like. But unfortunately, there's not a, there's not a way to compel that behavior.
This is Commissioner Brunick again. On the flip side of that, if you put in an enforcement, suddenly you're having people in an establishment tell the owner of an establishment what to do. And I think that's a difference and that's a point that needs to be made.
Is there any more commission discussion?
This is Commissioner Sarda. No, just, I think it's well-written. There's enough examples out there and I think this covers what we want to do for our community. There could be more, I suppose, and more of a fine, but I think for Yankton, this gets us what we need.
This is Commissioner Moser. Ross, you read the old language and the wording and I had a couple clarification points. When you read this resolution for the community, the old words were used and not the updated ones that we had discussed. Is that something that you're going to share? Do I bring them up point by point and then you offer your answer to that? Or how does that work?
I can cut to the chase if it's a little easier. In the last 24 hours, I've had conversations with each of you, I believe. And some of you had some comments and some requested changes and I've compiled those and I wanted to throw each of those out there for you guys to chew on and give me some direction whether to include it or not so we can be as far along as possible in this discussion by the end of the meeting. And I'm hoping each of you have a copy of this in front of you. Another way we could do this is Duane could give me permission to share my screen. And that might be the easiest way to do it. But Duane, do you have the ability to give me permission to share my screen? Okay. So I'm assuming all of you can see my screen here. Commissioner Brunick asked if, in the recitals to the ordinance, if we could make sure that there was the inclusion of a statement that one of the reasons that we are doing this is to preserve our workforce. That in his mind is a very strong reason that's compelling his desire that an ordinance like this be put into place. There was a good place for me to put that language. I've added it to, I assume you guys can see my mouse here. I've added it to this particular clause that indicates that one of the reasons we need to do this is a control measure to protect the health and safety of the city's residents, especially for seniors and those with underlying health conditions that make them particularly vulnerable. It seemed like a good place to also stick in to preserve the functional workforce. And I think that makes a lot of sense. That doesn't affect the language of the ordinance itself, but it does provide another solid reason for the ordinance.
Ross, would you zoom in on your page just slightly, please?
Sure, Duane. My zoom is on the other side. Here we go. You guys see that better now?
Perfect, thank you.
As I scroll down here, one more thing I want to point out when I was summarizing. I forgot to mention that the ordinance does also require the owner or operator of each premises open to the public to post a visible sign at each public entrance notifying patrons of the requirement that face coverings must be worn upon the premises. I think that's important, particularly for people who are not from Yankton that may be passing through. We may want to discuss the logistics of getting an appropriate sign available for people to download off the city's website or to be available for pickup from the city. It's another issue to come back and discuss, though. One of the comments that was made by Commissioner Moser was, what about situations where I might have to comply or I might not fit with one of these exemptions because I'm not entirely alone? But the fact remains, I may be, the only people I may be with is those who live in my household. So that seemed like an appropriate exception to add. I could find myself in a public place where the only people that are in close proximity to me are my family or I could be in a vehicle and the only people in the vehicle with me would be my immediate family. And that does seem like overkill to require you to wear a mask in that situation. So it made sense to me to add an additional exception like you see here in the new letter O. You would not require a mask if you were an individual who is only in close proximity to those individuals who reside within the individual's own household and no others. That seemed like a good catch-all.
Ross, if I can interrupt that, so, but we just got to make sure that if they're in a store, they still have to have a mask on, right? Because they could turn in contact with other people.
Yeah, I think if you're in a store, well, let me give you two scenarios there. Let's say it's my store and it's empty for the moment. The only people who are in the store are my kids. If there's nobody in the store, do I really need to wear a mask? However, if people come in, it's now this last clause kicks in, you know, and no others. If now there's people there who are not in my immediate household, I need to wear a mask. Does that make sense? And we could probably pick each one of these apart a lot of different ways. An expression that I think I heard the mayor use in the last week, we got to be a little careful not to make perfection the enemy of good here, moving in the right direction, particularly since there's not a fine that can be issued. We're shooting for what makes logical sense here. But having said that, if you guys have proposed language that you all agree to, I have no problem updating any of these. I'm just trying to get you all to a place where you'd like to see something that you feel comfortable voting in favor of. Did that answer your question, Commissioner Sarda?
Yes, sir. I think the and no others catches it.
Okay. Another thing that was pointed out to me by Commissioner Moser is other types of activities. Paragraph F seems to be a nice catch-all for swimming, showering, exercising. And we had team sports activities where the nature of the activity or level of exertion makes it reasonably impractical to wear a face covering. The word that seemed excessive and exclusionary here was the word team in sports. Because there can be a number of sports activities that are not technically team sports that you can't realistically wear a mask. And the sport that jumps to mind in our community is, of course, archery. But that's not the only one. I mean, there are other types of sports that are certainly individualistic in nature that aren't practical to wear a mask. So it makes sense to me that we just simply strike the word team as you see it here. That was a good recommendation, in my opinion. And then something I think I'd like you guys to chew on a little bit. Commissioner Minor suggested that paragraph N, in the playing of musical instruments, that that might be something perhaps better left to the organizations in charge of the musical activities. Like the school district has, I think, a concert, a band concert on Monday night. And I know that their music department has done extensive work to try to figure out how to do musical activities safely. I believe in some cases they have special masks or they have musical guards that... The way it was relayed to me, I'm probably not going to describe it right. They have made extra efforts to make those events as safe as they can be. And we may be better off just leaving that one off. But I am interested in your collective opinions on paragraph N.
I am sorry, Ross, I still haven't had a chance to talk directly with Mr. Carr, but I know they're, he's working with Mr. Moore's and they're doing everything they can to adhere to CDC guidelines and socially distance and masks. And so I don't think we would accidentally catch them. To me, it becomes more of a thing of, like, are you having live music in a venue? Right? That becomes more of what we're talking about and it's fine to leave it in.
As I flip through here, I think that was the list that I had received from commissioners ahead of this meeting. But this is your free opportunity as commissioners to chew on this to your heart's content, trying to get us to a place where you guys have something that you would feel inclined to pass next Wednesday.
All right, any objections to this? Or go ahead, Jerry.
Commissioner Weber, yeah, I just wanted to thank Ross and my fellow commissioners for all the work that's gone into this. This is not an easy subject. It's not been an easy thing for us to talk about or to compromise on. And, you know, from my perspective, I work with families and individuals and we talk about how to establish healthy interactions and healthy boundaries in communities. And as leaders here, we are just trying to do our best to support our healthcare systems and our healthcare professionals and our workforce and the people who are at risk of illness or death. And so there is no perfect solution in all of this. And as leaders, we have to be aware of so many things and so many consequences to this. But I just, I appreciate all of the thoughtful work and discussion and conversation that's gone into getting us to this point. And I just wanted to make that comment tonight.
As Ross and I worked to develop this ordinance, we really looked, for the exceptions, we looked a lot at, we looked a lot to Nebraska, actually, because a lot of their larger cities passed very similar ordinances. So we felt good that these, this language had been road-tested, so to speak, in quite a few different cities and looked through by quite a few different councils or commissions. So we felt that gave us some surety that we were on the right track. I'm fine with all those proposed changes. I don't know if anyone else. I guess now would be the time to speak up if you don't agree with those proposed changes.
Commissioner Minor here. I agree with the proposed changes and I like the addition, particularly that Commissioner Brunick made of preserve the functional workforce. We have a lot of mention of like our healthcare systems and facilities in the document, but if we don't have functional healthcare workers, then we don't have healthcare. So I appreciate that. I think this is a really strong document. I appreciate the work, the discussions, the way people have come together to try to find a way to thread the needle if there is a way to do that. I... It's a lot. It's been a lot, but I think we have a chance to make a real difference with this. And I think, you know, a week ago, I would have thought differently about the fine structure. I like the way it's written where we are working together with businesses and setting the bar at a certain level. I listened to the health board meeting yesterday and Mayor Johnson was talking about the chaos that exists around COVID and COVID resolutions and ordinances and decisions. And I feel like this particular step gives us clarity as a commission. I think it gives businesses clarity. I think it gives our citizens clarity. I think it sets the bar at a place where everybody can recognize what's expected. And I think that's really critical. And thanks to everybody that's been working so hard on it.
Ross, Commissioner Strom, is there, I'm just curious, is there another ordinance on our books that you're aware of that is of similar nature that it's there to provide direction, but really not enforcement?
Best I can say is probably.
I don't expect you to pull it out of your head, you know, but if there's something obvious that stood out.
Nothing that's obvious to me. I mean, I'm certain there's ordinances on the books that even if we could, we simply don't enforce, largely because there's no need to. People don't violate it or it doesn't cause problems. But I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Okay.
I just took the meeting off the top of my head.
And Mayor Johnson, have you, in any of your discussions with other first-class mayors, you had, they have something similar to this? What is the feedback coming from those mayors that you learned something from?
Yeah, I did have a chance to visit with Mayor Tenhaiken out of Sioux Falls yesterday, just very briefly, to ask him how the ordinance was working up there because it's similar to what we're proposing. It's an ordinance, it's the law, but there is no direct enforcement mechanism. He estimates...
He estimates that their mask usage has gone from, I believe he said 40% to 75%. It's not scientific. It's just his observation. So I don't think he would want to be held to that, but that's what he estimates. And they were also very concerned about the number of calls that would come into their police department. And he said, to date, they've received only three calls regarding masks. So I think that helps provide us comfort, because we are, of course, worried about the strain this could put on our police department. And we're worried about the effectiveness of this without having an enforcement mechanism. But I think by taking a very strong and clear stand, that the majority of our citizens will strive to meet these expectations that we've put forward to them, to follow the law. And so I have great optimism about that.
Mayor Johnson, this is Commissioner Mybaum. What's your estimation, just like Mayor Tenhaikin said, what's your estimation as far as mask usage here inside our city limits? And as part of this discussion, I'm curious to know what your goal is then with seeing this pass and perhaps where then our overall mask usage could be in a couple weeks' time?
Yeah, I am not going to hazard a guess as to what mask usage is in the community. I know it's improved in the last month as the surge has hit the state. And I think there's a lot more awareness amongst the public that mask-wearing is a way that they can keep themselves safe. My goal is to have this be the extra little nudge in the back of people's heads when they're out and about, interacting with others, to put on a mask. So, you know, maybe they're just going into the store for two minutes at the gas station to pick something up and pay for their gas. And now they don't put on their mask. But if they think about this, it's that little nudge, I need to put on my mask. It's the law. And so that's my goal. It's also, I think, important for us, like Amy said, or Commissioner Minor said, there has been so much messaging chaos for the public, if they're looking at some of the national speakers or even on the state level regarding masking. This is a way for our local leadership, our city commission, to endorse the vast majority of the scientific community's recommendations for where we're at now. The South Dakota State Medical Association has endorsed masking mandates in communities if they're being proposed. Avera Health has taken the same position. The chief medical officer of Sanford has said that the state should have a mask mandate. The White House Coronavirus Task Force papers came out just yesterday for late November. They too said that South Dakota should have a mask mandate. So I think the public health community is very clear on this. There's no, not really any debate. The CDC has done multiple, or compiled multiple studies and information about the effectiveness of masking, especially if it's done on a wide scale in your community. It lowers the infection rates, reduces the spread of COVID. And so I think this is our opportunity to strongly endorse and encourage our citizens to follow those recommendations from the people who have really studied this and understand Is there any further commission discussion?
Something that I want to add to the conversation, whether it's worthwhile talking about any of its inclusion in a potential ordinance or a toothless mandate, would simply be perhaps just some comfort to the public. And that is around our numbers. You know, we're meeting here tonight as part of a special meeting. And I think it would be helpful for those folks who are watching here tonight, who are going to read about our meeting in paper tomorrow, are probably already on social media later tonight. And that is what's changed in our community, perhaps numbers-wise or otherwise, outside of the change in CDC guidance that we'd seen yesterday, which it sounds like it took place after this meeting was called. So in between last Monday and tonight, I think it's just important that we express some kind of statement as to what's changed in between last Monday and tonight. Is that something you could help folks out with, Mayor Johnson?
Tony, can I interrupt you there? This isn't really a pointed towards Mayor Johnson, right? This is the whole commission. So I don't think Mayor Johnson should have to defend what we're talking about tonight. I think that would be probably more towards next meeting, when you have more health professionals on. As commissioners, I don't know that we're really experts in that field.
Sure. And I understand where you're coming from, you know. But at the same time, what we're inside of right now is a pretty tense climate. And again, I don't think we want to leave folks hanging as far as any additional information that we can provide to them at this point in time before we continue on this journey of talking about language within this ordinance. Because again, we took action last week on an agenda item that's very similar to what we're discussing here tonight. And so what hasn't been talked about publicly is essentially what's prompted this special meeting here tonight. So whether it's Mayor Johnson or whomever called the meeting, I do think it's important to provide some additional context, maybe before we get into this any deeper.
Is this the point where we would have Dr. Milroy as part of the health board to share her opinion on this?
I do think it's an appropriate time to invite Dr. Milroy to share why the health board made the recommendation. I would also just remind the public that there was no vote on this matter last week. Or was it last week? It's been a long time. It was last week. We had a work session to discuss the masking issue. The consensus of the commission at that time was that we work with the existing resolution and support some type of education or awareness or motivational campaign, which is being developed now. And so since then, commissioners have continued to listen to the community, have continued to think about the subject. And earlier this week, two commissioners did request this special meeting. So that's how we got to where we are today. And now I invite Dr. Milroy to explain where the health board was coming from with this recommendation.
Yes, thank you. I think what has prompted this is that the numbers in the state of South Dakota and locally are high and have remained higher. And there is a certain concern that as the cold weather approaches and more people are really forced indoors due to the weather, that those numbers will continue to persist and to rise. Also, we're looking at the holidays coming. I think that certainly the numbers and the number of people, I think, currently that are in the hospital, our hospital capacity is almost at its limit. I think that our healthcare providers throughout the entire community are really exhausted. I mean, I think we're reaching, I don't think at the beginning of this last spring, we ever dreamed it would go on this long. And I think our healthcare workers are really feeling the stress. I think our healthcare systems are feeling the stress. I think that some of our supplies, such as PPEs, are starting to become more critical than they've been recently. And for many of those reasons, I think the, there were over 600 physicians in the state of South Dakota that published the open letter saying, please, consider masks. We need to do something to change the situation. There were recently over 40 organizations throughout the state of South Dakota that signed on the hashtag #MaskUpSoDak. The South Dakota State Medical Association came out with their policy statement. And I think that the reason for that is that the situation as it is right now is not sustainable. And I think it is time for organizations in leadership positions to step up and take a very strong stand. And even without a penalty, I think that that strong stand of an ordinance and the people on the city commission are the respected leaders of this community. And I do think that if our commission stands up and says that strongly, people really will listen. And I do, I think we're approaching a crisis in the ability of our local healthcare system to meet the demand unless we do something. And I think that is what's changing.
This is Commissioner Brunnick again. I think another thing that's changed has been, that's happened in the last week, is you can read the obituaries that are locally. And I think that is something that's pretty dang important to take into account.
The last I heard, and this may have changed from yesterday, there were about three open beds in the hospital, which means that the healthcare of our community is at risk in that, what if you have a fractured hip, a heart attack, a car accident, many of the multitude of things that bring people to the hospital? What if that hospital is full? Do we go on diversion? You know, in my 30 years of practice in Yankton, I've never seen the hospital on diversion. But I honestly think that unless something changes, we could potentially be facing that in the near future.
Commissioner Minor here. I spoke about, at our meeting a week ago Monday, I just keep a weekly average. I add up the numbers and I divide by seven. I learned from a math professor, I know. And so when we spoke on Monday, the 23rd, the numbers I had were from November 7th through November 21st. And Yankton's average, we were averaging 28 positives per day. Now, I understand those don't all end up with hospitalizations, but there are hospitalizations that come from that. In the last week alone, from November 22nd to November 29th, our average jumped to 34 people a day in one week. So it's observable, the difference.
Dr. Milroy, this is Commissioner Mybaum. So as we move forward with whatever the next actions are, do you then feel that the hospitalizations, that that would be a data point that we should probably have at the top of our list? Or even as Mayor Johnson alluded to, there was some national coverage that mentioned Brookings and the efforts that they've made, that they have the lowest infection rate in the state. You know, so these are quantifiable numbers that we can be mindful of pretty much every single day, you know, that we can put into, you know, a trend that can help us in our decision-making. But just your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think that certainly hospital capacity is an important information that should be shared as to, you know, we have a certain reserve or are we reaching capacity? And I think it's significant that the Avera system and the Yankton Medical Clinic, as well as the Yankton School District School Board, have all urged this, recognizing that this is important to hopefully change the situation in Yankton before it does reach an absolute crisis situation.
Thank you. And then a quick follow-up for Ross, if I could. So Ross, in studying the mandates that you have, maybe other potential insight that you could share, are you seeing any mandates that are tied to data, whether it's, you know, if hospitalizations reach a certain percent? And I suppose technically it's a percent of a percent. It's my understanding, like, at Avera, for instance, it's not all 99 beds that are currently serving COVID patients, for instance. But whatever that percent might be, that you're seeing maybe mandates that are tied to that kind of piece of data, I suppose?
I've not seen a mandate written that way.
I would make one comment about maybe going back to the first question you had, if that's possible, to say one more thing. I don't know if you are familiar right now with the experience that the state of Kansas had. I don't know if that might be important here. But the, this was just published on November 27th by the Morbidity and Mortality Weekly Report. And the governor of Kansas, which again is a fairly rural state, similar to, in some ways, to South Dakota, the governor of Kansas issued an executive order requiring masks in public spaces. That executive order was on July 3rd. But they did give the option of a county opt-out. And so it by, and what happened was they published what happened in Kansas with the option of opt-out. And the incidence rates, when they looked from July 1st to August 23rd, they found that there were 24 counties that did go along with the mask mandate. And they experienced about a 6% decrease in their COVID-19 incidence, while the 81 counties that opted out and said, you know, we'll just make this voluntary, and pretty much what we've been doing so far, they actually saw a 100% rise in their COVID-19 infections. And I think the conclusion that came out of that was that they did feel that mask mandates did appear to contribute to the mitigation of COVID-19 transmission. And it was very noticeable in the mandated counties. And so I think that that is an example that says that this kind of a stronger statement can actually make quite a big difference.
This is Commissioner Mosher. Can I ask where the date came from?
I think that's just, I can't actually...
No, no, no. I mean, the date in the ordinance, in the proposed ordinance, the sunset date. Where did that come from? Who decided March 1? I mean, I'm just curious why or how that date was selected.
I will confess that that date was pulled from the sky, but it wasn't totally arbitrary. I tried to do, I reviewed some material to try to figure out how long it would be until there would be a readily available vaccine option. I understand presumably as early as the next 30 days, there's going to be the start of the emergency rollout, but that will be delegated to certain emergency responders and those at risk. And it will be a while before the general public will have access. So my thought was to cast this out there a little ways, to hopefully prevent the need for this commission to take action to extend this, but leave you the opportunity to suspend it by resolution if we got the vaccine rollout to the general public sooner. So that being said, it was kind of an educated dart at a dartboard, I guess. You guys are free to change that date either further out there or sooner. It seemed like no community had the same sunset date, but most communities had a sunset date. I saw everything from January 1 to, I think, the latest date I saw was somewhere in April. So March 1...
So March 1 made sense to me, but you guys can set it at whatever you'd like.
All right, if not, I would just thank the commission for all their contributions to this ordinance and this discussion. Obviously, going back to two weeks ago, there were, we had differing views on whether this was the right path for the community. That's probably still true. And so we just need to recognize that at the end of the day, we all need to work together and be supportive of one another because after all this is over, we've still got a community to lead together. So just a reminder to the public that the next meeting at which we will have a public hearing will be 5:30 PM, Wednesday, December 9th, at the Yankton High School Theater. Again, that larger venue is hopefully going to be able to accommodate everyone safely because that would be our goal, that if anyone does want to be present and address us directly, that they can do so in a safe environment. Amy, city manager, Amy Leon, have I forgotten anything?
No, Mayor, I think that covers it. The only thing left on our agenda is an adjournment unless there's other business that the commission wants to address.
If there's nothing more, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Sarda, motion to adjourn.
Webber, second.
We've got a motion and a second. Al, can you do roll call, please?
Hey, and this is a motion to adjourn the meeting, the special city commission meeting of December 2nd. Reiner.
Reiner votes aye.
Reiner is aye. Mosher?
Mosher, aye.
Mosher's aye. Schramm?
Schramm, aye.
Schramm is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunnick?
Brunnick, aye.
Brunnick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Motion to adjourn passes 9-0.
This motion, or excuse me, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Take care.
Good night.